Good afternoon, everyone. We will now call the October 6, 2025 Board Meeting to Order. Mr. Wilbon, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Representative Educational District 1, we have Ms. Katie Howard.
Present.
Representing Educational District 2, we have Ms. Aretha Baldwin.
Present.
Representing Educational District 3, we have Dr. Ken Zev. Representing Educational District 4 and Board Vice Chair, we have Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Present.
Representing Educational District 5 and Board Chair, Ms. Erica Mitchell.
Present.
Representing Educational District 6, we have Ms. Totten Pace.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large, seat 7, we have Mr. Alfred Sherry Brooks.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large, seat 8, we have Ms. Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large, seat 9, we have Ms. Jessica Johnson.
Present.
Also present, we have our Superintendent Dr. Brian Johnson and our General Counsel, Madam Nina Gupta. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 2, 2025 Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown, second by Board Member Brooks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda 4, October 6, 2025 Board Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown, second by Board Member Brooks. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Point of clarification? That was Board Member Pace.
Yeah, you're kind of time a lot.
You know, two black dudes on the side, you know.
No, we're not gonna do that. Two deep voices. Okay, let's make a correction. Apologize, Board Members, Totten Pace.
Got me off track here to get started. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, we have four presentations. Our four, our first presentation will, that, all the presentations are aligned to the strategic plan. Our first presentation is around our system being efficient and effective. Dr. Kim Bradshaw will provide an update on strategies to implement sustainability initiatives focused on org structure, financial stability, process improvement, and environmental stewardship. Our second presentation is aligned with the strategic plan focus area of we are caring for every child. Mr. Tommy Usher will provide an update on implementing systematic culture and climate strategies. The third presentation also aligns with the focus area, our system is efficient and effective. Dr. Lisa Bracken, Chief Financial Officer, will share our monthly budget update and begin our 2027 budget conversation. Finally, the fourth and last presentation aligns with our focus area of our system being efficient and effective. And Mr. Max Sacks from HPM will share a brief update on our comprehensive long-range facilities planning efforts. We look forward to engaging in these thoughtful discussions. Dr. Bradshaw, we are ready for your presentation around our system being efficient and effective. And as he gets ready to come up, I believe the first slide is a bit of a point of brief celebration. You know, our, our focus is on making sure that our students are employed, are entrepreneurs, are going on to a two-year, four-year institution, or gaining some type of meaningful certification and credential. But we know there's a lot of work that goes into trying to make sure that our students experience the initial gate of, frankly, getting across the, getting across the stage. And so we are extremely proud of our teachers and our leaders, our counselors, and, and, and all of our support staff, graduation coaches, et cetera. London Public Schools achieved a graduation rate of over 90%, which is the first time it's had a graduation rate at that level that we can track back for some time. So again, a major kudos to Tommy and the team, and really everybody that goes into ensuring that that work happens. Right, Dr. Bradshaw?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Johnson. Today, I will provide you with a brief update on our plan to implement sustainable initiatives. As a community of believers and getting back to the basics, we must evaluate our current programs and initiatives to determine if they are effective. We have taken a look at the strategic plan, and the goal is to provide sustainable initiatives. We've taken a look at the focus area, and the area is our system is efficient and effective. We have identified what we call key performance indicators. Our focus is to become a more efficient and effective organization. While there are many key performance indicators to evaluate, we have identified four areas. One is fund balance usage. We want to get out of using our fund balance to actually balance our budget. We have a goal there to be at 0% by target 2030. In terms of utility usage, the goal is to cut utility costs, and we have a metric there to decrease that number. We are exploring working with an ESCO, Energy Cost Savings Company, to assist us in that effort. The third is the facility support. We need to take a look at the number of work orders and the time it takes to complete work orders in order to make sure our schools are performing functionally. And lastly, but not least, information technology, teacher access to instructional tools. We have a MyBackpack use, and we want to make sure that our teachers can access that at all times. Under Dr. Johnson's arrival, upon Dr. Johnson's arrival, an impact support initiative study was completed. We have reviewed the study and have identified district-wide share areas. Of course, equity and access and advocacy will remain the foundation, but some of the changes that need to be made, we've identified six areas. One is establishing a structured training schedule. The second is clear organizational structures. Thirdly, implement standard operational procedures. And last but not least, integration of system automation. In addition to that focus area, we have identified four strategies that need to be implemented. One is strengthen organizational structure. Two, develop and maintain sustainable funding models. Third, enhance operational processes for long-term efficiency. And number four, advance environmental stewardship practices. Under Strategy 1, word says current actions, collaboration, and accountability. My sole purpose as the Deputy Superintendent of Operational Efficiency is to ensure that the organization is being fiscally responsible. I currently supervise six departments to include information technology, school safety and security, facilities and transportation, athletics, policy, and human resources. And the goal is, is to make sure that all departments are talking. Mr. Usher, under core function or focus, he's responsible for teaching and learning. Under school support, we have our cluster superintendents working closely with our schools. And finally, consolidation and streamline, that's all of our efforts at the district office. The next steps. Number one, we're going to complete our organizational reviews and audits. Number two, we're going to communicate new structures, responsibilities, and expectations. Number three, we're going to continue to rethink how we construct the organization to best support schools and students, which is our core business. Strategy 2, I will highlight a few notable points. However, Dr. Bracken covered at the budget hearing the current financial situation the district is in. But I wanted to highlight, under FY26 budget, it says sustainability through discipline. I define discipline as in staying within the budget. Too often, we've taken a look at different and various programs, but we've never really evaluated the effectiveness of those programs. We had to use a portion of the fund balance this year to balance the budget, and the goal is to reduce the dependency of utilizing the fund balance. Within the fund balance, there are five different classifications. The one that I will focus on today will be the unassigned fund balance, which is typically our rainy day or cushion. There is a board policy that governs the use of the fund balance, and the goal is, again, not to exceed 15%, but then not get below 7.5% in utilizing the fund balance. And I'll share a few graphs with you. With this chart, the trend is from actually 2016 to FY26. And if you please notice the red, which is the unassigned through FY24, you notice we had somewhat of a healthy fund balance. Then if you take a look at FY25 and project it to FY26. In addition, when I say use of the fund balance, if you've noticed back in 2016, we did not use our fund balance. Then you'll notice 2017, 2018. Then you'll notice the periods during the COVID years where we had the ESSR funds. And then FY24 and FY25, we really, really took use of our fund balance. On this slide, which is historical by percentage of expenditures, if you'll notice FY24 there, we're not to exceed 15%, but then not less than 7.5%. The bottom line is we're kind of trending in the wrong direction there. Number two, the goal is to develop and maintain sustainable funding mod, um, models. Moving forward, we must look at outcomes-based contracting, and we must ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. One example is our Xerox contract that we have. We must ensure that Xerox is assisting us with reducing print costs. The second is centralized versus decentralized procurement. Our schools have a lot of autonomy, but the goal is, is to move toward a more centralized approach without taking the autonomy away from these schools, but making sure that we are able to purchase far more for our schools. Then developing and maintaining sustainable, sustainable funding models. It continues there, but these are things we can do immediately. And Strategy 3, enhance operational processes for long-term efficiency. While comprehensive long-range facilities planning comes to mind when we think of this slide, there are several things that we can do to support this strategy. One would be developing KPIs, what we call key performance indicators. Number two, we need to develop what we call standard operation, operating procedures. We are currently implementing what we call an ERP system, and we are reviewing all of our processes that we follow at this time. And our next step there is to take a district-wide approach for awareness and transparency. If you look to the right, starting with step one, we've had a major kickoff back in December of 2024, and we're looking at a projected launch of 2027 of implementing the entire plan. And finally, advances in environmental stewardship practices. What comes to mind when we think of that is transportation, facilities, and energy use. Our current fleet, right now, we have about 116 propane buses, 25 electric buses, and a total of 114 DSO buses. So our fleet is over 250 route buses. So we're looking at better ways that we can implement clean energy. Under facility utilization, we're looking at our comprehensive long-range facilities plan. Basically, we want to reduce our footprint of schools. And finally, the energy use, we're looking at an ESCO to come in and support us in ways that we can cut on energy costs. Our next step is to continue to collect data from anyone we can get it from, and we're actually, hopefully, can work with our parents that we can find better ways to ensure that we're maximizing every taxpayer dollar. That concludes my presentation, subject to your questions.
Great, thank you. Questions? All the people, great. Cynthia, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you. This, this covered a lot of ground in a very short period of time. And I, there are some, there's some good ideas here that I look forward to seeing expanded and, and delved into in more detail in the future. I want to go back to, I think it's slide 14, the one about the different classifications of fund balance. And, and I don't know whether you or, or Dr. Bracken need to respond to the question, which is, would you just please give us a little more detail on these different categories? I think it's important for the community to understand that this is not just one enormous slush fund that we can do anything we want to with, that, that we really, that in some ways, we are very restricted on it.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Bracken.
Absolutely, thank you so much for the question, and good afternoon, members of the board. So yes, unassigned fund balance is what we're typically talking about when we're looking at those percentages of fund balance. That's your most liquid fund balance that you can have access to. And then it kind of gets more restricted as you go up that tier. So when we say non-spendable, that is usually earmarked in inventory and things like that, where it is very, it's locked down, you don't have a lot of access to that. Restricted and committed are different terminologies that can be used for fund balance that is earmarked for a specific purpose, and that typically requires board action. So you can commit $10 million of your fund balance for a project two, three, five years from now, and that is earmarked, and we no longer have that set aside as flexible funding. Assigned is even looser, so I, as the CFO, can just assign fund balance for a certain purpose for the upcoming year. We did this during the COVID times, when we were in like the 24, 25% of fund balance. We assigned everything in excess of 15% to the ESSR funding cliff. So we intentionally said we were building it up, knowing that we were going to have to step down the usage of that fund balance over those years, and we have done that. And then you, again, your unassigned is your most flexible account.
Moving on to slide 15. Are the relative percentages that we maintain of each of those classifications typical or normal for a school district?
Yes, and actually, we have more in unassigned than I think you would see in a lot of school districts and some school districts, because some of that fund balance can be committed towards debt purposes. We don't carry a lot of debt. But yeah, that breakout is pretty typical.
All right. Thank, and, and do you see any concerns about either the, the relative percentages or how, how those assignments change over time?
Not the assignments, the relative percentage of fund balance to our expenditures is something that we'll spend much more time talking about this afternoon when I present at the finance.
Okay, I'll save it for then. Thank you very much.
All right, Sherry.
Thank you so much for the, the presentation. I just had a couple of questions around specifically like the energy efficiency and some opportunities there. I was looking up, I seen an article recently about Batesfield School District in Arkansas, and I think it was in like 2020, they went from a $250,000 energy deficit to a $1.8 million surplus in three years by adding solar farms on their school grounds and on their properties, which allowed them to sell energy back. And this was almost five years ago. So surely, you know, times are a little bit different. However, I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not we are exploring the opportunity with as much land as we have, rooftops as we have, to do some micro-solar farming to help with energy costs. And then also I had a question about, I know there have been conversations about moving towards outcome-based contracts. And I'm, I am curious as to whether or not we've applied those protocols and what review of those outcome-based contracts looks like as we're looking to become more efficient, maybe find, you know, best providers, et cetera. So those are my questions.
Yes, sir. To answer your question about the solar farms, the district that I previously worked for, we had several schools that had solar operation. It does, it does work. The, probably the limitation would be space here, but we can actually go up on top of the building. So that's something that we will explore as we look at an ESCO supporting us with this initiative. The question about outcomes-based, Chelsea, you're, she's working closely with us.
Totten. Oh, sorry. Oh, Chelsea, come on down. We need to accelerate this meeting, sorry.
Yeah, so outcomes-based contracting takes a little bit of time, but the work is really impactful. So we looked at applying the first round with one of our partners that provides mentoring and other services. It's going to take probably two years to get there, but the other ones that we're looking at, and I'll just kind of give an example of what a true outcomes-based contract could look like. Let's take, for example, SAT, ACT prep. So you give the vendors a baseline of money, and then you give them an addition per student based on the number of points their increases on SATs or ACTs. The catch is, if the vendors perform really incredible, you actually could end up spending a little bit more money. Rarely does that happen. This has been a pretty proven work across the country at this point, but I actually am meeting with our teaching and learning partners and our partners in IT to identify the next few contracts to do this with. The protocol is pretty, pretty set by the Southern Ed Foundation. Everything's publicly available online for how you kind of negotiate those deals and those. Everything's publicly available online for how you kind of negotiate those deals and those rate cards. But we need to identify the next set of projects to really get moving, because it is not only impactful on the financial side, but also certainly on the student achievement side as well.
Thank you. Is it okay that I just ask one more question? I'm looking at how we've gone into fund balance. And I think many of us are aware, you know, 2020, a lot of us got a lot of ESR money, 300 million, I believe, here in APS every year on year. And I am curious, how much additional funding during that ESR funding period did we take on? And of what we procured during that time, and I'm sure that answer can't be made right now, but in the things that we procured over that time, how much are we still holding on to?
I'll keep passing on the contracts and let Dr. Bracken answer that one.
Yes, thank you. So 314 million over the five years, over the three different ESR buckets. And much of that was spent on, most of the first round of funding was spent on materials, so masks, desks, a lot of things that we used during the pandemic to make it safer for students and staff. We also made some deep investments in technology, including hotspots and access for students. But a lot of the additional, as the money continued to come in in CARES II and ESR III, were at one-time investments. So we did spend a lot of that money in stipends and one-time payments for our teachers. We did a lot in stipends for hero pay, for overtime. We doubled the time and half that we used for some of our workers who were working during that time. We made investments in remediated learning. So we extended our elementary day by 30 minutes and paid everyone additional stipends for that. And there was additional curriculum that was tied to that as well. Some of the things that lingered into FY25 was we did continue some of those stipends for hard-to-recruit areas that were initially funded from ESR. And those did come into the general fund, and you'll see how that impacted our fund balance spend in this upcoming year, because we did pick up those additional costs with fund balance for FY25. We also continued a program where we had a full-time sub in all of our buildings that also contributed to the usage of fund balance for FY25. We've sunset those going FY26. So most of our initiatives that were ESR-funded that did have legs on them have sunset by now. There are some things that had additional operational costs. So when we did some revisions to our HVAC units, the filters now that we have to buy are much more expensive than they used to be. And so that does have some operational cost with legs.
So what you're saying is that, other than the operational stuff, there is nothing still lingering from ESR funding up through now?
Most of it phased off. I'd say what lingers is the culture of spend. So what happened is when we came into an additional $314 million over the course of five years, with a real emphasis on maximizing the spend of those dollars, we had an opportunity to not necessarily have to make those hard trade-off decisions. We were able to pilot new initiatives, we were able to take on new investments like overtime, like stipends. We were able to expand into different positions. We added social workers and psychologists and school wraparound supports that allowed us to focus on our investments without necessarily having to think a lot about the other side of the equation. But what I'll talk about this afternoon in my presentation is how that culture of spend is still with us while the revenue doesn't still support that. And so we do need to start getting, working those muscles again around trade-off decisions. What we're going to stop before we start something new, what we're going to, what we're not going to invest in or divest in before we start making any new commitments to programs. And so we haven't really had to do that in a few years. And so we're all kind of stretching our muscles a little bit when we're starting to think about how we're going to tighten our belts again.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tolton.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bradshaw, for the presentation. And Shivi actually kind of started on a path that I was thinking about related to solar panels and the opportunity that might exist there for our facilities. Kind of along those same lines, just wondering, as we work with this new group that you mentioned, might there be an opportunity to, I guess, delve a little further or plan out an EV strategy as we think about our facilities and maintenance vehicles, as we think about our school system, police department as well? I know some of those vehicles, as we purchase them from a fleet perspective, are already kind of fitted, you know, from a standard perspective. But I do know, you know, in the past year or so, for example, Brookhaven and Georgia Tech have added EVs to their police fleet. And so just wondering if there might be opportunity for us to begin to explore that there and see what that looks like. And then lastly, just a thought around LEED certifications as well, and just kind of what that strategy might look like going forward, especially as we're in the midst of our facilities conversations right now and what that strategy might tell us.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
So in order, I just want to make sure you are, yes, of course.
Thank you for this, Dr. Bradshaw, and I'm thankful, I appreciate my colleagues' questions around some of this, the operation or the outcomes-based financing. I mean, clearly, the energy, I mean, we made a lot of cuts in the central office. The energy is going to have to be at the school site. And so I'm particularly interested in hearing more about your training principles. And I love Dr. Bracken's phrase, "A culture of spend." I haven't heard that phrase before, but I'm still processing that. I think there's some wisdom in that. When we think about training principles, because we know we're, I mean, outcomes-based contracting is great, you know, all of our getting our utilities cost down, but we're 85% people. And that's where, and we should be doing, you know, we should be doing both things at the same time. But clearly, we have to think about how we allocate our human capital. Is there, you know, in this principal training that you talked about on slide, was that 19? Yeah, slide 19. Are we talking about, you know, classroom, master schedule alignment, classroom loading, using our resources more efficiently? Can you give us a little bit of insight there? Because I think, and are you bringing consultants in to help? Because this gets technical, and there are strategies here that principals can apply. But I do think being focused, as we've, you know, we've spent a lot of time in Dr. Johnson's first year, really taking a good look at the central office. I know there's more work to be done. But clearly, we have to think about how do we use resources at the school level? And principals and GO teams are uniquely positioned to do that. Can you give us a little bit of insight into what that training is and what we're expecting of our principals in this budget cycle?
Yes, sir. One thing we wanted to do in training our principals is to ensure that we have our site managers, our operational managers that once reported to the district, they now report to the principal. So all operational concerns start with the school site manager first. So even just leaving lights on, all things that have to do with the school, now it works closer with the principal. So we have training that's scheduled, and we know that this is a new concept that the district wants supported, all of the site managers. But we're hoping that this will have a positive impact on what happens at the school.
Looks like Ms. Osher wants to elaborate.
Yes, sir. So every January, we begin the principal training at principals' meeting around the budgeting process. And so we're looking ahead to January already by making sure that we're coordinating with our SIS team and our teaching and learning team so that that principal training is really all around, to your point. One, starting with the data to look at what the instructional needs really are, and then looking at the actual programmatic pieces. And so our program manager on the word languages side, ELL, except on that, you name it, those program managers will be working with principals to identify, based on data, what is the allotment that's needed to ensure that the students are being served appropriately, and then building their budget from there.
I appreciate that, Ms. Osher, because if you're reading the tea leaves, it looks like what's coming at us, what our school allotments are going to look like, are going to be, are going to be tight. And so preparing, rather than just principals opening up an email and saying bad news, are we giving them the tools, the supports, the creative ideas, the instructional practices that can help them navigate through that? I appreciate it.
Can I just double-click on both of your comments? One of the exercises, so nothing in this conversation is divorced from the broader facilities conversation that we're having, because everything is so interconnected. But one of the exercises Lisa and team are going through right now is to take just basically current enrollment and to roll it up to the projected implications for next year, when you think about small school supplement and baseline, right? So for, you know, some of our schools that are really small, you're talking, you know, half a million dollars plus in loss, which is significant and really is a tough conversation. And so, you know, these are the conversations we need, we're having, trying to really have with the community, that we can no longer sustain continuing to put that additional resource towards that small school supplement and do all the other things that everybody really desires and that our children really deserve. So that is the conversation. I think to the point, and I know superintendent, you know, one of the beauties of how we're positioned is that ability to thought partner, having a coach by your side that's been in the trench as a principal, that's had to deal with opening up the document and seeing, you know, a quarter million dollars less or whatever that number is, and saying, okay, have we thought about? Because, I mean, we all know, when you're in that principalship, you're sitting there, you get used to your resources being what your resources are. You know, you kind of plug and play the next year, and then you get this significant reduction. And it's like, what do I do? And so before you do that, let's think about this. And let's take advantage of all the moves that we can take to ensure that we have the least impact on the direct classroom, the day-to-day instruction of enforced students. And so that's the work that we're leaning into now. Let me, let's be real, real clear though, right? Like, and I just always think it's important. One, we're not the only school district that's having financial challenges. Lisa, anytime Lisa texts on a weekend, it's finance-related, and it's great finance news. But she was talking about Fulton County this weekend, and they're going through this exercise of looking comprehensive ops. They went through the exercise of determining school situations last year, anticipating significant challenges coming into this year. So we're not, we're not any different in large part than other places that are having these really difficult conversations, but they're just conversations that we have to have really openly. So we'll continue, we'll continue that work going forward.
Thank you, and apologies for stepping out, but I was cold and I had to go get my jacket. So we could save a couple of dollars by turning the air down just a wee bit, right? Like, okay. So I want to lean in a little bit on the green, renewable, clean area. And that was, I stepped out, and I believe both Tolton and Board Member Brooks touched on this. I believe they were talking about solar panels and our use of solar energy on our buildings. I would like to go a little bit further in an opportunity and see with the abundance of properties that we have also, is there an opportunity for solar farms? And, okay, I didn't hear farms, I just heard things on buildings. I'm talking about on land, right? Large farms and tapping our students in the CTAE and preparing them for being able to build, fix, repair, whatever, that space. Because unless we're going to burn up the planet, we're going to, we're going to need to do more in that space. And our students would need to be prepared for that. So I would love to see what type of opportunities there are around using our properties for space like this, as well as building and training a workforce to be able to do this as well. As well as exploring grants and funding that is in this space, because I believe the state of Georgia does have some opportunities there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Katie?
Thank you. And I really appreciate Cynthia's question about breaking down the different categories of fund balance. And I know we'll talk more about it later. And when I look at the history, I mean, slide 15, those are choices we've made over time, also because of the way we've been spending in other areas. And we made those decisions, and we felt they were the right ones, and they've led to some significant things that we have to make choices now as we go forward to make sure we can pay for things long-term. So can't wait to talk about that more during your presentation, Dr. Bracken. But glad we're discussing it in terms of sustainability and efficiency. To me, that's the efficiency part and effectiveness. When we talk about FMP and like more programs for students, but efficiency, this all matters. Then with slide 25, and I really appreciate the things that have been listed that we're looking to do, you know, work with our student groups at high schools or in elementary and middle, in environmental stewardship. And knowing there's also an audit going on, other things you called out, of course, the food waste, that's a huge contributor to greenhouse gas and also just money and food. And we know we have folks who need, our students too, additional access to food. When can we kind of expect, and I know there are many things going on right here, I guess I'll go back to, I guess, looking at kind of an energy efficiency audit. When will we have that? You say that's ongoing right now?
Yes, ma'am. We had a discussion regarding that today. We're looking at identifying an ESCO, whether we have to use the RFP process to help us. But actually, starting maybe FY27? I know that seems a little late, but we want to go through the process of identifying the ESCO and ensuring that we're following the process and identifying the projects that will actually help us move in that direction.
Right. It's good to know we can anticipate that and just however we kept up to date. Because just seeing things we're specifically doing helps us too with the community, saying we're doing everything we can. We've already turned every stone or continue to, and looking at CLL, and now looking at our buildings and just cost savings. And then, yeah, when we can get updates when ready around things that are happening at individual schools, whether it be recycling or whatever it is, it's actually sustainable that we can really support. Because we've seen initiatives start and we've seen them stop. So really appreciate the work that's gone into this and excited about the outcomes-based contracting, and looking forward to seeing those examples, and appreciate the work that's being done. So thank you for this very in-depth report and looking forward to getting updates.
Great. Thanks, Katie. Jessica?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to the conversation about the small school supplements, just to make sure, because I know as a part of the facilities master plan, a lot of these changes we are not talking about within the next two academic school years. But I just want to clarify, for school supplements, is this a change that we're anticipating in the next academic year? That there won't be small school supplements?
That is correct. We started talking in earnest about this last budget cycle. Knew we'd give, try to give this year, frankly speaking, as we work with schools this cycle. We went a little further in the hole, which Lisa joyfully highlighted at the Budget Commission. But we held, in effect, schools harmless, which were primarily small schools, because on the 15th day, there's a numbers true-up. And so to the tune of about $3.5 million. And what we did not want to happen was a situation where, you know, frankly speaking, and again, it's one of the challenges, a handful of students at a school with less enrollment is significant, whereas, you know, a handful of students at a school that's got, you know, 700 students, I just use that number broadly, the implications aren't as significant. If I've got 250 students and I lose five students, it's got fairly significant implications, in particular because of the per pupil. So we wanted to hold that harmless, just because in our most fragile environments, we know that having a level of continuity for those students was important. I'll be honest, like, I don't, we don't see the path to be able to sustain that. And so we are preparing schools for that, having that conversation. I was at a school a couple of weeks ago on a visit, walking with the principal, just kind of talking through broadly as we're visiting classrooms, just kind of how she's thinking about some of that. So yes, it's going to be a challenging budget cycle. We're obviously going to work with schools, but it's going to be a challenging budget cycle.
Sure. And I think, I just want to lift up kind of the tension around that for small schools and the equity challenge with that, because some schools and some communities don't have the advantage of a separate foundation as a fundraising mechanism to close gaps within this kind of window of time as while the district is making a lot of these changes. And so I would want us to be mindful of what other resources and other ways the district could lean in and be supportive, since we're looking at that change being more immediate.
So we do, we do acknowledge though, right, that the, that the, that one of our real challenges is the is the difference in the per pupil expenditure that we, like the, there's a wide range of investment at, at, at all levels, in particular elementary. So so, yeah, we, we absolutely are going to do a special kid, just like we did this year. We, we, instead of traditionally this district on the fifteenth day pulls money back. We, I said, no, we're not, and we did not. It cost us three point five million more dollars that we, I'm sure still is working to find. But I will say, we can't continue. This, the, 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 the reality is, and it was interesting, I was at a community event, I don't, I don't know, I can't remember what it was. But they were talking about, I think, Errol Davis, Ben, Ben, oh, I know, it was a couple of weeks ago, I mean, a few days ago. And, and, and the individual said that some of the conversation that's happening now are things that articulated that were communicated, you know, many years ago, you know, and so we've got to address them head on, because the sustainability, as we talk about sustainability, the sustainability of the district is, it's, it's a real conversation. But yes, to equity, yes, to making sure that our, our students are prepared and taken care of, and that will continue to be a commitment. But we got to have frank conversations with schools and frank conversations with, with community members, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bracken.
All right. Good afternoon. Vice Chair McDonald, Dr. Johnson and Board Members. We are happy today to provide an update on our focus area of caring for every child, specifically our academic objectives, specific to implementing systematic culture and climate strategies. Before you, we have our key performance indicators. We're looking to increase our school climate rating by... It's working backwards for me. Okay, there we go. There we go. All right. School climate rating from twenty-two percent, from twenty point two percent to twenty-nine point thirty percent. Our student-staff relationships from forty-three point six percent to forty-seven point nine percent. And our sense of belonging for our students from sixty percent to sixty-three percent. Highlighted here for you is our school, school climate star rating for twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. On the left, you have the components that comprise our school climate star rating. The rating takes into account student, staff and administrative attendance, along with discipline, climate perception, students, staff and parents participate in the perception survey, along with safe and substance-free environment, where the state takes the data that's in infinite campus around discipline, along with some of the survey questions from the perception survey to come up with a score for a safe and substance-free environment. Over to the right, you will see how we performed during the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. For the percentage of schools scoring four or five stars on the climate star rating, you will see that we fell significantly below our metro area school systems in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year relative to the climate star rating. Looking ahead, our strategies for this current school year in regards to impacting the climate star rating and implementing systematic culture and climate strategies are, one, to build leader capacity to shape positive school culture and climate. Two, to create a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students and families. And three, to increase opportunities for students to feel heard and valued. For strategy number one regarding building leader capacity, there are five ways in which we currently do this work. Beginning with coaching and mentoring, on the coaching side, our cluster superintendents are the individuals specifically and primarily responsible for providing coaching to our principals. That work typically begins during the summertime as principals and school-based teams are building out their continuous improvement plans. We refer to those plans as SIPs. And so as the school teams are building out their SIPs, they typically have two academic strategies and a culture and climate strategy. Cluster superintendents provide the coaching for principals to use data to ensure that they are identifying the right lever on their cultural and climate. And then to help them think through the systems and the structures that they will build throughout the year to ensure that those strategies are actually being implemented at the school level. On the mentoring side, all of our new principals, either new to the district or new to the role of principals, prin, as a principal, they receive a mentor and the mentor is a current sitting principals at one of our current locations. When we think about our systems and routines, we're thinking about for those strategies that the school teams have put into continuous improvement plans, what mechanisms, protocols and structures are the schools putting in place to ensure that those things are happening? And so our cluster superintendents are responsible for ensuring that those things take place. For an example, one system might be around our whole child intervention team, because all of our schools are required to have a whole child intervention team. And so one of those structures may be put in, making sure that the principals have a calendar to know when those meetings are taking place. They have a tool or rubric to then go observe to ensure that those meetings are meetings of quality, where the attendance side of that meeting is actually happening and the team is coming up with real strategies to go out and ensure that they're reducing chronic absenteeism. Bright spots is our opportunity to basically share best practices either within the cluster, across clusters or across the entire organization. Cluster supports. This year, we have restructured our student services division to provide greater support to our cluster superintendents and then more direct support to schools. And so the cluster superintendents have a group of support individuals that support them. Within that configuration, we have coordinators of student discipline, coordinators of social work. We have student interventionists, we have our family engagement liaisons, and we also have our two health and wellness coordinators who work closely with our cluster superintendents. This school year, each cluster has KPIs or what we would call progress points. The support team that's now supporting the cluster superintendents, they are responsible for ensuring that those KPIs, those progress points are met. So for an example, each cluster has a KPI or not a target, but a progress point around reducing the number of absences or reducing the amount of chronic discipline infractions. So the student, the discipline coordinator was the person who's then responsible for working with the cluster superintendent to make sure that that number actually decreases. The support team is being evaluated by the cluster superintendent to make sure that there's greater accountability around this work. And so we feel that with that support structure in place, we will get closer to meeting our goals around our KPIs. Last step here, number five, is really just, again, looking at the data, making sure that we're using, like the Georgia, or the climate, climate survey data, along with any attendance data, discipline data and so on and so forth, to ensure that school teams are tracking and monitoring the actions that they've put inside of their continuous improvement plans and they're making pivots as the data determines that there's a need for a pivot. Next steps is to continue to ensure that we are utilizing that school support team effectively. Again, this is a new team that we've not had before. And so we just want to make sure that the cluster superintendents are utilizing and leveraging those individuals to support schools based on school need. And then continuing with our professional development around restorative practices and de-escalation techniques and strategies. These are some of the professional development that we have already identified based on the data that we're seeing from our student support team as well as our cluster superintendents. Strategy number two, creating a self, a safe and welcoming environment for all. On this slide, we're looking specifically on the left at the current state of the decline in requests for our SROs. The data is not necessarily broken down by grade level, but the data does express that there has been a decrease from twenty-four to twenty-five in the number of requests for support from our SROs. At the very bottom, there's a decrease of about fifty-two percent overall, reduction in the number of arrests in those identified clusters. And again, those arrests are not identified by either the student or an adult. It simply communicates that there has been a reduction in the number of arrests for our SROs. Over to the right, we have several actions that we currently have in place to ensure that our students and our families are safe while on campus. And of, and of course, during instructional day, I will not go through all of those, but would highlight that we now have SROs in every single elementary school, which was a recommendation from our safety and security task force from last school year. And so we're happy that we're able to meet that recommendation. Likewise, I wanted to highlight and note ours student services team, because last week they were featured in several media outlets for Talk It Out. And Talk It Out is a text platform that allows students to have access to a licensed mental health professional twenty-four hours a day. And then there are a couple of other different things on this particular slide that we have in place that we're excited to be able to share with you as a way of creating a safe and welcome environment for all of our students. I think most of you are familiar with Say, Say Something, Say Something. That is a tool that we've had in place for many years now. And then the Centegix, and then the, the new vestibule, and then the Raptor visitor system, which requires all of our visitors to sign in as they are entering our campuses. Here, we have some additional data for you. We collect data in a couple of different ways. And so to the left, you have our family engagement survey data that is provided by our family engagement team. And if you look at the data, it shows that, you know, most of our, many of our families have responded favorably that we are creating a warm and welcoming environment. When we think about the Georgia school climate survey data, which is the data, which is the survey that the state provides, it tells us that there's additional work that we need to do around our students. And so while although, when it comes to family engagement, the adults, our families, our parents are responding favorably, our students are not responding as favorably. And so we have some additional work to do in this particular area. Our current actions around this is building more community with our new elementary resource offices. Again, this is a new this is a new strategy we're using at the elementary level. Building our capacity of our school leaders and staff to deepen welcoming practices. Again, with this, when we're looking at customer service, some of our cluster superintendents have already implemented customer service training for their principals. And then some are bringing back some customer service standards of excellence, protocols that they're using within their schools and across their communities. Also looking at implementing the Safety and Security Task Force and Safe Havens International as a recommendation that was being provided. And so we're going to look into that as well. Strategy number three, increase opportunities for our students to feel heard and valued. Couple of things here, won't read all of them, but again, taking a look at the Georgia climate survey data, making sure that we're making good use of that as principals and cluster superintendents are planning out their continuous improvement plans and monitoring those plans throughout the school year, leveraging that data to make sure that those plans are being implemented. And of course, prioritizing to ensure that we're actually using the recommendations and the feedback that we're getting from our student advisory council. We're also looking at making sure that our school teams are looking at building clubs and teams and activities that are truly based on student interest and increasing the presence of our students on our goal teams to provide feedback in that area as well. Next steps, continue to leverage feedback through our surveys and focus groups. Track and report the status of our students, record, our student council recommendations. And then increase student interactions with trusted and reliable adults. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Great. We will start down on this end. Katie?
Thank you, Mr. Usher. Appreciate you providing this information and just the transparency around where we are and calling out the opportunities we have. And looking at, I think it's, let me get my glasses on. Slide eight. I think, and talking about like de-escalation practices, training around that. And then I think also slide well, deepening welcoming practices. Wondering, you know, what is that going to require in terms of professional development? Clearly, we have so many people in all our schools. And then how are we going to ensure like accountability and how we're going to measure it? Like, so many people who've been trained and the effectiveness of that. And I really appreciate you referencing accountability and the examples you gave of dashboards essentially that have been set up with whole child support, making sure things have happened, the support teams being used to do that work. And I, I'm glad to see these restorative practices and de-escalation techniques called out, making sure that we know what's happening if we're choosing that route and, and how we're measuring it.
Yep. So sure thing. Specific to the restorative practices, the way that that came about is a review of the data. And so for our student discipline coordinators, along with Dr. Fort, who's, you know, the interim executive director of student services, what they're trying to do is to look at the data specifically to identify targeted support for schools. And so with restorative practices, there are some schools that need a better, a deeper hit or deeper support around restorative practices. And so the team will be identifying the schools across the district who need that specific training. That training will go into Ellis, our online professional development system, and that's one of the ways in which we can track who is participating in the training and then who is not.
And that's really helpful. And then for us to see as we're monitoring this, like, how many people have done the training and the impact of that. And then same for like whatever is decided or determined around deepening those welcoming practices, like specifically what's being done in that case too.
Yep. So with regards to the welcoming practices and just customer service in general, currently that work has lived with the cluster superintendents. And so they are the ones who are working closest with their principals to ensure that training is being provided. And then also, I know that on the H R side, on the H R side, Ms. Lester and her team, that they are looking to build that into our onboarding process as well. So that as our leaders and our, any staff member that's coming on board, that they have exposure to the customer service training as well.
Well, good afternoon. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Usher said, the customer service rollout will be district-wide. We did a few pilot groups starting at the beginning of the school year, but we will go district-wide with all divisions, all departments and all schools trained. We will then connect that data to our climate survey and our Gallup component. So it's very important for us to have all of those trainings. And then that will lead us to more of how we will engage the staff as well.
Great. Thank you. Look forward to seeing that data. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Ken?
Thank you for this data, Mr. Usher. It is, it is sobering to see that we're, you know, the climate, and I know the climate survey, the climate star rating is, is a complicated beast, but we're forty points below the state and fifty points below some of our neighboring districts. Combined with the, there's a lot of, first of all, thank you for sharing this data. Let me just start, start there, because this is, you know, we need to have a good understanding of where we are. And then you, you couple that with, you know, half our students feeling like they don't have a trusted adult that they can, they can go to in their, in their, in their schools. Not sure if I'm reading that question exactly right, but my question is like, what, you know, so I know we're making deep investments in, in, in training teachers and that's important, but if kids can't receive that because they, they, they're not in, you know, for whatever reason, the climate in the school is, is getting in the way. My, my question is, what, what is the root cause here? What, what do you, why do you think we're so far? Why, why do we have so much work to do here compared to our other districts?
Yeah, thank you for that question. In fact, I, I, I think what's happening, what, what happened in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-fourth school year.
In fact, I, I, I think what's happening, what, what happened in the 2023, 24th school year specifically is there's a fifth component of the climate star rating. So the state provides additional points for schools that apply to be a PBIS school, either at the emerging operation or the distinguished level. And I think it may be an additional 5% of five points. And I don't know that at that time, we as an organization took advantage of that opportunity to apply for those additional points. And so that's, I think, a part of what, what happened in the 2023, 24th school year. This school year, what we're trying to do better is we're trying to make sure that principals understand all of the components of the climate star rating and how that impacts the school overall. Ensure that they have good understanding of the specific strategies to impact this data. What I didn't go into clear detail around is the round, the part, the piece around monitoring structures. And so if in fact, the school has in their action, their continuous improvement plan, identifies specific actions to address either the attendance piece, because the attendance piece is comprised of, you know, it's teachers, staff and students. Then if the school team has not identified specific actions around that, then of course that's going to impact that. Likewise, with the discipline, getting back to the restorative practices, if we don't do a good job of making sure that the staff is trained, but not just trained, but they're actually implementing those practices. The principals are monitoring to make sure that those practices are happening on the ground. Cluster superintendents additionally are coaching and providing that over the shoulder look to ensure that the principals are supporting the teachers with implementing the strategies and that there's coherence there, then obviously that's going to impact the data as well. And so what we're trying to do, Board Member Zev, is really just be more intentional about how we monitor and support principals as they execute their school-based plan around these buckets.
That, that, that's helpful. And I'm glad that you're not just focused on the technical parts of, of how do we, you know, how do we get a few more points here? Because, you know, there's clearly something happening here. And the, I guess this, the, my, my last thought is on this page 37, the, the one in the upper right-hand corner, the data point is half, only half of our, less than half. I'm not sure if I'm reading this right because it's, it's, it's written like a yes or no. It's given a percentage, but it's written a how many. But so it kind of threw me a little bit. But if I'm inferring from that, less than half our kids feel like there's a trusted adult in their building they can go to. I would have gotten that wrong if, if you gave me a quiz about what our, where our kids are at. Can you, can you just offer some, some thoughts about how we pick? Am I reading it right, first of all? And, and, and directionally, how, how do we, how do we go from here?
Yeah. And so what I would say right now, what we're doing, Board Member Zev, is this is a data point that the cluster superintendents work with their school teams around. So literally what happens is during the continuous improvement planning process, as, as principals and school teams identify their culture goals, cluster soup will sit down with the school team and look at this data very much how we're describing it now. And, but of course, it's the school-specific data. But looking at the data and asking the principal the feedback, why does this data look this way? Give me your impression, your thoughts around this looks the way that it do, the way that it does. And then work with the school to build out those specific actions around that, if that makes sense. And so you hear me using that word action steps quite a bit because that is what schools are actually implementing in real time. And that is what we're monitoring in real time. And those things are created from these specific data, if that makes sense.
Team, done here?
Just, just, just one quick comment. I think what this evidence, what this evidence of is, you know, part of what we're thinking about with like student success plans and really getting to a more granular level with students, I think is really, really important. The, the, the other thing I would mention is these are middle and high school students primarily correct that are taking this. And so it's important to get their feedback in the moment. I'm also hypersensitive to like the timing, right? Like, so if you had asked a high school, if you'd asked my son in, in August, does he feel like, does he feel like an adult cares about him? Based on the fact that we said no cell phones, he's going to say no in that moment. You know what I mean? And so it's, and so it's, there, there, there's some cyclical things. But I think the attack from the standpoint of looking at the individual school and, and, and getting a little more granular because this is an average. And so understanding what's underneath that average, not all of the schools are at this number. There are pockets of good that are happening and there are pockets of we need to improve that are happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Usher, for your presentation and the, the data points there. Just a thought, I know in years past that APS has used the Youth Truth Survey for students. And I'm wondering if it might be something worth exploring for us again to zero in on some of the indicators, particularly for students. But family and staff are, are a part of that as well. And it gives us some flexibility in that the climate star rating is an annual kind of assessment, right? Whereas the Youth Truth piece can be done at least twice a year. And that could give us again, some, some underlying kind of indicators as to why things are the way they are. So I think it could be a complimentary tool that we might explore to see if it, you know, could be worth, worth our time and, and, and value. And there's philanthropic dollars available for that as well. So just thinking about partnerships and supporting this effort to get to the bottom of it, if you will, and to improve. Thank you.
And the only thing I wanted to add is just, you know, my thanks. As we look at the creating a safe and welcoming environment, current state and the actions, you know, you said it, I just want to say it again about the elementary SROs. Because at the time, you know, this came up for my community repeatedly. We were not successful at that time, everyone not aligned on how to do that. So when Dr. Johnson came, that's one of the first things I talked to him about. And of course, then the task force was put together and the task force also echoed that sentiment. So, you know, I don't think everyone in all of our schools even know that we did this. And I, you know, I should have really pushed it out because I knew that there were people with very strong opinions about it in my particular neighborhoods. But it was, that's just a direct result of the community sharing info, us being good listeners, us being good stewards of that info and then taking it and having the right relationships and the infrastructure to actually get these things done. So I'm very appreciative that the district listened and did that. And I should have pushed it out to my community hard when we made the agreement to do it. But that getting those SROs into those buildings was such a wish for so many people. And I'm grateful that it was taken care of.
Thank you.
And are you, are y'all jumped in? Okay, go ahead. Chibi? Chibi, go ahead. Chibi, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. And thank you, Board Member McDonald, for also bringing up why it was so important for us as a board to support an expansion of our SRO supports in our schools. You know, some would say blooms before Maslow. Some would say a child doesn't care how much you know until they know how much you care. As a high school teacher, I see how disconnected many of our kids are from staff on a regular basis. And I think just from a practitioner's perspective, a lot of it has to do with our hyper-focus on academics or just doing the school part that sometimes we're not doing the SEL part. We're not doing enough of the connecting with young people part. And I think, I know that there is a huge consequence to when relationships are not focused on in schools and the impact that that can have on the overall climate. My question was a couple of things, like, and I guess I'm going to have to have conversations offline because we don't have all day. But, you know, I'm looking at the amount of SRO calls. And I'm looking at Jackson and I'm saying to myself, why is Jackson so high? You know, I'm, I'm looking at, and if we can go back to that slide, I would, I would appreciate it. I, I don't remember what number it was, but it had like horizontal candlesticks on it or something. Yeah, here we go. I'm looking at, yeah, Jackson, like big outlier, right? I'm, I'm looking at Douglas, I'm, I'm looking at Carver. Grateful to see Mays be, being lower. But, you know, it's hard to, to look at that list and not state the obvious. Predominantly black schools are the places where we're seeing more interaction with SROs. Now, one of the things that I specifically brought up when we talked about expanding SRO support in our school was also wanting to see a decline in the amount of involvement with SROs. So I am, I will, I, I do have to throw my flowers out there and say that I am grateful to have seen a decline at least in, in the 25 year in the amount of contact, even though we've been expanding, right? And my hope is that we continue that. But I, that strikes my heart. That strikes my heart because I know that many of those SRO calls come with adjudication. And so I guess I, I, I am curious as to how we are being intentional about our SRO engagement or involvement in, in matters with students, whether or not they're equitable across our district.
Yeah, just one, one, one point, one point of clarity clarified, Chief, on this slide. So there are two different, there are really two different data points. An SRO can be called to a site for?
Anything.
Anything, right? Like anything, right? So this is capturing overarching calls. Whereas the second number below shows the reduction percentage in actual situations where a student has to be.
Charged with it.
Charged with it.
That's correct.
Okay.
So when you think about, one thing I can share with you, we listen to the radio, right? The police radio. And, and when we talk about calls for service, that's what I'm talking about. What's, what's happening over the radio? You can get a feel for some of the things that's happening with the radio. There's a lot of traffic. There's not a lot of traffic. It's quiet. Knocking on wood. I mean, it's like quiet.
Amen.
It is so quiet and it's weird. When you think about these calls, a lot of them include things like mental health issues. So we're, we're responding to a lot of things. So it's not necessarily that every time we're responding to a call, an arrest is being made. That's not necessarily the case. But we're seeing in most of these, most of these instances are officers providing support to the school for something in particular that's going on. And there's other, other things other than making arrests. When we think about arrests, I'll mention this real quick. I think a lot of people look at the word arrest and think the person was taken to jail. And a lot of our cases, about 90% of the time juveniles are never taken by juvenile court. They never take them. Now, if they had a gun or something or, or violent crime, they will take them. But under, you know, the circumstances typically is we're turning them over to their parent at the end of the day. That number also includes adults. So we have, remember, we run 24/7. So we have things that happen at night that, that's also including that number. I mean, so it could be broken down to really look at the fine numbers in that. But we're, we're looking pretty good.
Yeah. So I think in all fairness, like if we could drill down in data at another point, more so in, in all of those ways, I think that helps it because it goes to exactly the point. I mean, you had as a point three bright spots, right? It's hard to, to name what the bright spots are and tell the good truth on ourselves if we're not really able to capture it, right? So if I'm able to say, you know, there's this many interactions happening at the school during the school day or there's this many times a student has been adjudicated and this is the reduction in the amount of students who are being adjudicated. I think that, that information is very helpful because it does help us to combat sometimes narratives about our schools or a perception of a lack of safety. And we can talk about how safe our schools are, but we are not able to do it without those data points. And, and I, I think what I'm trying to say is, is to encourage us to, to be able to have the data to, to tell the good news, that, that less of our kids are being adjudicated. Less of our kids are having to interact with a SRO during the school day. Less of our kids are being arrested during the school day, et cetera. I, I don't know that we're able to tell that story.
But to, to your point, Board Member Brooks, that's part of the push around making the data visible. I don't know, and y'all tell me, I don't know. But I don't know that we've looked at it in this way to actually get to this level of granularity. And I agree, there's another layer of granularity to look at incidents by school in comparison. And, and frankly speaking, we've been having some level of conversation on calls out at a, a thing today. But we've been having some conversation with Atlanta Thrive around setting some, setting some goals and some targets year over year for calls and things like that. This is an area of focus that, that they've worked to lean into. But to the point, to make the data visible, to make it really clear. And, and whatever the story tells, right? It allows for a plan of action and response in regards to what needs to, what needs to take place.
Fair. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Yeah, I'll make this quick. I just have a question about the student support team that you talked about a little while ago. I'm not clear on how that's the same or different from the student support teams that, that we've had for years that I know you're familiar with back when you were a principal. Is this student support team designed to support adults or support students?
Students.
Okay. So how is, how is this different? It, it was under the, the, the bullet point about building leader capacity. So can you just, I'm sorry, can you just go over that briefly?
Sure thing. So formerly roles such as social work coordinators, family engagement specialists, and formerly it was MTSS, now they're called to an interventionist. They sat in a different department, sort of off to the side. And instead of having those individuals in a separate department off to the side, they're now over in the schools division and they're coupled under the cluster superintendent. And so the cluster superintendents now direct that work directly. And then the cluster superintendents are also responsible for evaluating and monitoring the work of those individuals as opposed to having them off to the side. And what that does is it allows for a greater visibility into what those individuals are doing and how they're supporting the schools on a day-to-day basis versus having them off to the side where there wasn't as clear line of sight into what they were doing. Also different is these individuals have goals that are tied to things like attendance and discipline and so on and so forth, that they're now held accountable for. Those goals that they're held accountable for meeting versus how they worked in the past.
That's actually a great idea. So I know the cluster superintendents often act as mediators in situations between a teacher and a student or a principal and a parent where, where they've, they've come to loggerheads. And, and so putting that group underneath the cluster superintendents, I think will be very effective in resolving some of those, those hard situations. And thank you for explaining.
Sure thing. Yep.
Great. Thank you, sir. Dr. Jay? I think we're done. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You got to end on a great idea. All right, full of great ideas. We'll do a financial update. Full of fun and great ideas.
Absolutely. Good afternoon again, Board members. Dr. Johnson, today I'll present four items related to finance as we cover topics spanning across three different fiscal years. First, I'll provide you with the unaudited revenue and expenditure update for the FY '25 year end. Next, I will present to you the financials for FY '26 for all activities occurring in the months of July and August. And I will bring to you several FY '26 budget adjustments. Finally, I will provide a brief overview of the planning process for FY '27 and beyond, which will include an overview of how we plan to use the monthly budget commission meetings to walk us through the development process. The next four slides provide an update of the unaudited consolidated general fund financials for fiscal year 2025. The first slide shows the revenue by category, budget to actuals, including variance and percent of budget. The good news is that we actually did collect a head of pace for new revenue by 1.87%. The bad news spend outpaced the budget. So we still have used more in fund balance than anticipated by $7 million. This slide continues our analysis of the FY '25 revenue by comparing FY '25 actual revenue against FY '24. Local revenue was up 6.6% over the previous year and state was up about 9.69%. Use of fund balance is up by $50 million and overall resources were up by 11%. On slide seven, we see the expenditure budget to actuals with remaining balance and percentage of budget for FY '25. Overall, we spent 102.34% of budgeted expenditures. Slide eight shows unaudited actual expenditures for '25 against '24 actuals. We see the largest increase in direct instruction pupil. We see the largest increase in direct instruction, pupil services, and staff services. Overall spending is up by about 11% from the previous fiscal year. The primary drivers of the overspend are related to compensation. For instruction, the overspend is mostly in substitutes and stipends, and all school budgets positions are budgeted using an average salary based on the previous fiscal year. Raises attracted more veteran teachers, driving up average costs. For per pupils, for pupil services in FY25, we moved certain positions from school administration to pupil services and schools, and the average salary was up from the previous fiscal year. Behavior specialist in particular. Staff services shows the difference between projected and actual salaries for instructional coaches, and school administration also shows the difference due to average salaries. For transportation, bus driver pay and overtime and the creation of the new program for Northwest are driving the overspend. We are proposing corrective actions for FY2026. The budget department now sends monthly email communications to schools and department budget center managers that highlights and brings awareness to spending trends, especially in compensations such as stipends and overtime. We also locked in sub-budgets for schools, removing that flexibility this year. There has also been a reduction of district-wide spending and sub-initiatives. Schools and departments now have a dashboard that they can assess daily on open gov portal, and we will also perform a mid-year review of the average salaries trend. Again, there, these are unaudited financials, and this number may change, but this puts us with a fund balance going to FY26 of 12.96% above the floor of 7.5, but below the recommended 15%. With the next four slides, we'll move into FY26 financials. Since we're so early in the fiscal year, there's not much information that we can currently derive from these reports. Through the months of July and August, we have collected about 1.18% of the total resource budget. It's important to recall that local property taxes represent the majority of our operating budget, and bills did not go out until September fifteenth, with a due date of October thirty-first. We're starting to see those collections roll in, but will not see them reflected in a meaningful way in the financials until a couple of months from now. As a benchmark, we can see the revenue at this time last year was at 1.13%. On slide thirteen, we see the budget to actual expenditures so far for FY26. A seeming lag in instruction and pupil services behind other functions is due primarily to the fact that most of our positions in these areas are less than annual, and so employees who work less than 252 days contracted, and these functions have salaries that accrue back to the previous fiscal year. Slide fourteen represents the current spending trend for FY26 against the FY25 trend. While there are some fluctuations, the overall spend is on pace with, but slightly ahead of the previous year's spend. Please remember the timing of large expenditures from one month to the next can greatly impact the percentage spend against the previous year. We have a small, oh, the current FY26 budget assumes a usage of fund balance of 13 million, which would leave us a fund balance equal to 12.3% of the current year's expenditures. However, we are working multiple strategies to reduce current year spend, such that we do not use any fund balance for the current year. We have small adjustments to our state awarded grants that will true up both revenue and expenditures to match the actual awards. These adjustments impact the paraprofessional to teachers grant and FY2026 custodian supplement. We are bringing an increase of 259,000 for the Title IV Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant for Usher Collier. Federal grants impact the general fund because we consolidate those funds into the schools' allotments. Tonight, we will be bringing forward an action item for your approval for a tax anticipation note. As was presented earlier today regarding the district's fund balance, the amount of fund balance we have on hand can drastically impact our cash on hand at any given time. You can see here that in years when fund balance has been low, we've had a hard time managing the September and October cash flows, and as we await for the tax bills to go out and have needed TANs in the past in fiscal years seventeen through twenty-one. If you can imagine collecting your entire annual salary over a couple of months and then having to live off of that all year, this is the example of what we're experiencing. With nearly eighty percent of our revenue coming from local and most of that coming in from October to December, it is normal for our low point to be this time of year. To ensure that we have ample cash on hand moving into October, we're recommending to borrow $30 million through a tax anticipation note or TAN. The proposed TAN is in the amount of 30 million with First Citizens Bank, serving as the lender. The note carries an interest rate of 3.6% and will close on October ninth, 2025. This is a sixty-day note with repayment expected by December eighth, 2025. The estimated total interest for this short-term borrowing is approximately 180,000. Proceeds from the TAN will ensure that the district can continue meeting payroll, instructional, and other operational obligations without interruption. Repayment will be made in full from local property tax revenues once they're collected later in this year. The financing structure has been reviewed by our financial advisors and bond counsel, and it represents a standard and responsible tool used by school districts to maintain financial stability during timing differences between revenue and expenditures. The final piece of my presentation today serves to kick off the FY27 budget development process. We covered the following slides in detail at the budget commission meeting last Tuesday. The presentation for that meeting can be found in Simbly on the Budget Services website, and the recorded presentation can be found on the board's YouTube page. In short, we have a math problem. As previously discussed, we have used a significant amount of $88 million in fund balance for FY25. We made some major investments last year that are driving up that spending far above the amount of new revenue that we're getting in, one of the largest being teachers and other certified staff compensation. We have started to reverse this trend with some really hard decisions in FY26, primarily through the significant reductions to the central office, some of which are continuing even tonight. However, even as we make significant cuts, new cost drivers arise. So while we cut $70 million from the central office, we added right back more than $25 million in just benefit costs alone. It's really a good example of how costs continue to outpace our ability to cut our way out of the current budgetary issues. The multi-year does make some assumptions around continuing revenue growth of more than 2%. However, we do anticipate a continued increase in expenditures, more conservative than the past years, but still greatly outpacing revenue. This means that we're beginning the budget process with a $50 million budget gap that expands back to over 100 million by 2029 if we take no action. As we begin the process of prepping for FY27 budget development, we'll take just a bit of time to ground us in the financial realities of our current math problem. We have to address the external factors, our internal increased spending, and our revenue constraints in order to immediately address our needs for efficiency and sustainability. For some of our external factors, we're watching both declining birth rates of more than 13% in the city, while inflation is stretching the affordability of living in the city beyond more than 25%. This slide attempts to cover some of our most significant cost drivers over the last ten years. As mentioned before, salary and benefits are a huge cross, uh, cost driver with over $341 million in new investments in the last ten years. We've made huge investments in pupil services and, and student safety with increases of over 140%. While we've begun the process of pulling back on general adminis- administration over the last ten years, that spend had doubled. Charters have grown 157% due to increased enrollment and the share of local revenue. The facilities master planning process is delving deeper into the issues related to our school allotments, but currently there is a $16,000 gap between our highest and lowest funded school on a student-by-student basis. When compared to other metro districts, we staff nearly 1,000 more adults and support between 17 and 49 more schools. Without getting our arms around this increased spending, there is no way for our district to become more sustainable. While our local revenue is still increasing, the district benefits greatly from the influx of $314 million in ESER funding. This reset the culture towards increased spending without long-term and recurring new revenue. The tax allocation districts tie up around $1.2 billion of education funding and city development initiatives, and both increased exemptions and declining commercial values are drastically cooling the access to local revenue streams. As we dive into planning for FY27, we'll need to continue the hard work of reviewing our number of schools. However, we must also continue to review the school allocations as well. There are many, many more strategies that we'll be considering throughout the FY27 budget process and beyond. While we do have a significant math problem, we're going, we're going to need a community of believers to help us figure this out. We will be planning a variety of community meetings and feedback opportunities to help us with making some of these challenging decisions. What will guide us through these processes is the budget commission schedule. Each month, we will take one more step to getting in the more sustainable district. That concludes my presentation. Take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? I'm gonna start down here. Jessica Johnson, Board Member Johnson, Board Member Pace, Board Member Brooks, Board Member Howard, Board Member Zep, and a possible Board Member Baldwin.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa. And so I wanna kind of, I'm, I'm trying to piece together parts of the story, right? I think, first, I have a clarifying question around the TADS, the 1.2 billion that you mentioned. Over what time period? How many years is that?
Over the course of the TADS.
Okay.
So typically, that's thirty years.
Thirty years. Okay. And so then annually, just ballpark, like how much, how much is that?
It's the equivalent of about two mils. It's over $100 million on an annual basis.
That $100 million annually?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I, I think I'm, I'm focused on slide twenty-three with the, the big spend items, and, and I just wanna lean in here because as a member of the budget commission and someone who kinda was on the board when we were making these decisions, kind of along the way, right? And, and getting information along the way, like this is a need. Of course, leaders are leaders. All of these things were really amazing when we bought into them and, and voted to, to approve the, the shifts, but kind of as we look at them collectively, I, I'm curious, how much do we think revenue was gonna increase by before?
So we thought revenue was going to increase by 6% and it actually increased by a bit more than that. So our revenue outperformed our projections.
But we still had, you know?
That's correct. But we overspent our budget by, or we used 7 million more in fund balance than we had planned to use.
Sure. And, and so I think, you know, maybe someone else can lean into the, the overspending slide. I won't touch it, but I, I'm curious about that. But, but one question that I, I want us to, maybe just reflect on it, I guess going forward, because it's sitting here wanting to be accountable for the decisions that we make and be well informed. What is another way or approach so we can get the information of at what cost? Long-term, a little differently across the board, so, so we can see this before we get here?
Yeah. We, so I will take us back in time to FY2025 and really, 2020, it was in April of 2025 prior to us bringing the budget for adoption. We did call together a full board retreat. So we went beyond the budget commission, but we called the full board. I think we spent, you know, almost a full day kind of delving into each one of these, and that was the first time I presented to the board the $100 million budget gap. I know that even in January, when we brought to you the teacher raises of 11%, that's when I started bringing forward the slides around the number of staff that we support and that by increasing revenue or increasing the cost of all of those individual staff, that that was really gonna put a burden on the budget. So we do try to, throughout the budget process, tell the long-term story, re-bring that multi-year a lot of times. I think that one thing that we do a really good job of is solve our problems without causing too much pain and discomfort, and so we can have a $100 million budget gap. Central office felt that this year. I promise you, there was a lot of pain and discomfort, but to Dr. Johnson's original point, we did all we could in FY26 to shield the schools from some of the cuts we needed to make. And so every year, we're able to solve our annual problem by getting really creative, by renegotiating our pension obligation, by doing as much as we can to try to solve it for that year, but it does kick the can. So eventually, we do have to have the hard conversations around our number of buildings, our number of staff, and our number of programming. I have another slide in the budget commission meeting that has more of a scale and it shows the scale kind of breaking, because what we've tried to do is hold on to all of everything. And I think there is a conversation that needs to happen around which one of these in that year? Maybe could we have pulled the trigger on? Which ones of these years could we've done at 50% in that year and had a long-term plan? But I think that, you know, there is, there is legitimacy and the pressure to be expeditious in these decisions, right? There is also a need in the community that we hear around SROs, right? And so there is a real need to increase the number of SROs, and so over the last decade, we've increased safety spending 140%. So there's, there's things that drive these costs, but there is the long-term conversation of where do we start doing less? Yep.
Thank you. Board Member Pace.
Board Member Dr. Zep.
Gotta keep, gotta, gotta be on your toes.
Just writing down everybody's names, so when we come back, I'll be ready.
Thank you, Dr. Bracken, a lot, a lot here. I wanna pick up on a couple of things. The revenue projection, 2%. Is that, revenue is largely set by property tax values. 2% seems, like, how did you arrive at 2%?
Um, learning some lessons from being more optimistic in the last projections in the last couple of years. So we projected 5%, which we thought were, was going to be more conservative for this budget cycle, and I needed to bring back to you a $22 million budget cut last month because the actual tax digest that we got back was, actually showed commercial going negative. So we are being more conservative in that, that projection. Again, these are long-term projections, and this is a bit more conservative, so we do wanna show what that would look like, but it's no longer not realistic, I think. And I think that there could be a potential of revenue going negative at some point, right? So none of this even contemplates a recession or any, like, actual tightening of the revenue. It's just a little bit less, but I do think that this district probably needs to plan for building that fund balance back up for the potential of revenue going negative at some point.
I appreciate that. 2%? I, I think when you talk to homeowners, they say 2%. They feel like their tax, tax bills are going up at a greater rate than, than 2%.
Homeowners are seeing their tax bills go up 20%, 30%, 50%. Commercial values are down .4, so.
Well, I wanna talk, ask a question about the TADS. I think that you, I, I think when I looked at the budget presentation, I saw $86 million a year, maybe a hundred, maybe, so in that, in that, in that ballpark. So what happens, so I believe they, they extend, I mean, I know they don't all extend, they don't all expire at the same time, but I think it's around 2030 when the Beltline TAD expires. So at, do I read that, that in 2030, if this board takes no action to, you know, just, just let things run the way they are, does that mean $86 million shows up in, in, in that current year dollars, in today's dollars, that money shows up in 2030?
Yeah, so it would be the portion of the TADS that is the Beltline, so it wouldn't be that full 86 million, but for instance, in the current budget, we were able to reclaim 16 million from the Atlantic Station TAD that closed last year. And so that's a really good example of how for, you know, the, the length of that TAD, we did not collect revenue from Atlantic Station, and then when it closed, we immediately got 16 to 17 million dollars back into our base because the TAD did what it was supposed to do at closed on time, and we're able to now use those funds for, uh, long-term expenditures.
So, so when you're out years, you don't have, I'm just curious, so if, if we believe $86 million is gonna show up, do we think that we should be planning for that? I mean, or is that, like, as we're, as we're moving through this process, or is that, is there some reason why that 80, I mean, if, besides the board not taking action, but is there something that, that $86 million not look like revenue to us?
The multi-year would include any pilot payments that are coming from The multi-year would include any pilot payments that are coming from our existing TADS and the timely closeout of any of our TADS.
Okay. And what are the pilot payments now? How much are they?
So it depends. It varies each year. I'd have to get back to you on it exactly. But I think it's close to 25 to 30 million.
So really, we feel, we feel the delta between those two, because the pilot payments would evaporate, but the?
Right. So for instance, like the Westside TAD, we now have 50% of that being piloted back to us. We also have pilots in the Beltline TAD that are coming to us on an annual basis. And all of that's built into the multi-year.
And then last question, is the, should we be concerned about the federal shutdown and the impact? Not as individual citizens, of course, we should be concerned, but as this body, should we be concerned that, that there's gonna be some impact to our operations?
Not for the short term. So the way that we receive our federal title dollars is actually through the state. So the state receives their allotment at the beginning of the year, and we just draw down from the state. So for the short term, we're good, but we want to keep our eye on it for the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my question is around some of our excess properties. And if we were to sell those properties, where do those funds go?
So they would come back to the district. And my recommendation would be that we use those to restore fund balance, because again, those would be one-time revenues, and we don't want to book recurring expenditures against those. But that would be a really great way for us to, short-term, restore our fund balance back up to a more comfortable position, especially as we know most of the facility conversations that we're having would not take place until '28, '29, or beyond. And that still leaves us with our short-term crunch for 2027, where we do, are projecting a budget gap.
So as a district, we have discretion in where those funds would go and how they're used?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Board Member Brooks?
Thank you. With the TANS, $30 million, I believe you said, is gonna come up. I was curious as to how we made a decision on which bank we would, we would use. And if there's been any thought process in perhaps using Atlanta-based banks, particularly like a Citizens Trust, for example, what, could we not be better supporting our local economy with these type of financial moves?
So just like with all of our contracting and procurement, we would want to use a competitive process. And so through our financial planners, we do use that competitive process. We actually had four bids that came in of interest that could return around this quickly. So again, we were closing this as of Friday afternoon. I was still putting together documents for the board meeting today that could respond with that $30 million cash on hand in the short time we needed it. And we went with the bank that had the lowest interest rates.
In our procurement process, do we have preference for Atlanta-based companies or banks to partner with?
We don't have any scoring, so we don't have anything within our procurement process that adds points. But we do, through our minority and women-owned business policies and through the language within our procurement process, take into account, could also take into account our local businesses.
Are they actualized in who we actually procure? Or is it just something we consider, but it doesn't actually change who we, who actually gets business from us?
I mean, I think that that, that we consider it, so it could change.
So my question is, are we effective?
I think that there's probably, I don't know when our next study will be. That would be more of a question for our Equity Department, and I can follow with that, follow up on that. But when our next supplier diversity study would be undertaken is when we can actually see the numbers and metrics around how our supplier diversity initiatives are rolling out.
So are we not continually reviewing the effectiveness of our minority and women business initiatives?
We are. I don't have that number off the top of my head. Our Equity Department manages that. We have a arm that does our supplier diversity and works in collaboration with our procurement team. And so I would have to get that information for you.
So I'll take that as a no?
You can take it as a no, that I don't know the answer right now.
My other question is, with expenditures rising nearly twice as fast as revenue and fund balance steadily shrinking, with both structural actions, not temporary cuts, is the administration prepared to take to ensure APS remains financially sustainable?
So I think Dr. Johnson might be able to speak to some of the bolder cuts. But I think a really excellent one that Board Member Johnson lifted earlier is the concerns that we have around things like our small school supplement. So that is a stability initiative that we've been able to implement in the past. It is a stability initiative, because as Dr. Johnson mentioned, when you have a very small school, the per pupil allocation can be $28, $30,000. And so even the fluctuation of four or five students can have a major budget impact on a small school. And so the small school supplement is a way that we can come in and try to, to offset some of those big impacts for a school year over year. That is one thing that we're looking at for next year, around school allotments, our baseline of funding. But we also mentioned our friends at Fulton County. They put out a list today that's, or last week, that's very long, all the things that they are looking at. A lot of really great innovative ideas and brainstorming that went into that list. And I think that that's a place, too, that we can look and at least start putting numbers next to. And then through our Budget Commission meetings, we'll be bringing those forward, and we want the community to help us. Sometimes the bold decisions don't necessarily come from us. It comes from our community and from the people most impacted for that. So I look forward to the process and getting more ideas about what we can look at.
Just two things I'd mention. One about supplier diversity, then two, I think, about bolder cuts for sustainability. One around supplier diversity, actually Brent and team, just, just are recognized by the, by the Georgia Minority Supplier Diversity Council. The district was as a rising star. So they've, and it's just a byproduct of the work that's going on. Board Member Johnson connected us with the H.J. Russell Center as well. We've, we've been able to partner and do some training, just trying to go deeper into the community and make sure that, that, you know, our minority suppliers know that we are, we're open for business, right? So it's a two-way street. As far as the bold cuts, can you go back to the slide that shows the FY25 big spends?
You're getting a little excited over there.
Yeah, because I'm just, I just want to be clear. So this happened in not April 25, this, this had to be an April 24 conversation, because I was not here. I didn't mean to say that out loud. I did. Oh, I'm sorry. But I will be honest, right? Like, I, and I'm just, I am what I am. I ran a 45,000 school district that had about a little over half a, half a billion-dollar budget. And I'm, and again, I just want to be honest, like, we, we never would have been positioned to do a 11% pay increase. Never. It's nice to be able to do, right? Like, from the standpoint of us retaining teachers and, well, I don't want to say retaining, because I think you retain with culture, but recruiting teachers, right? Like recruiting experience. Here's the truth. Anybody with experience, you give 11%, if I got experience, I'm gonna hop over to APS. Because, and that's a great thing when, if, the theory of, the theory of action, right? The theory of change is that a more experienced teacher is going to really improve student outcomes. In generality, we make that assumption. That's not always the case, because I've seen some extremely talented, newer to the profession teachers as well. So it's a little bit of both and. Here nor there, it, it was, like, it was all chips in the middle of the table. So when you go down this line right here, and you add up kind of the recurring commitment that was made, it's well over $100 million, all in one failed swoop, right? And it's, and it's all, you know, it's all recurring things, the whole child positions, you know? It's like, well, and, and all these are things that, once you give, you can't take away, right? You know, we give, you can't give a limb. I asked, I was explaining this to Student Advisory the other day, and I asked the little girl, young lady. She works at KAVA, and I always cut up with her when she's here, because I like KAVA. That's a free, I guess, ad for KAVA. I don't have any shares. They're not publicly traded. So it's a privately held company, so, but anyways, I heard the check. So, so I asked her, I said, once you make 11 bucks, right? You make 11, if you make $11 an hour, and I came to you and I said, next year, you're gonna make $10 an hour, or in three weeks, you're gonna make $10 an hour, like, what are you gonna do the next day? She's like, I'm probably gonna quit. And I said, okay. So we have made a commitment, the right commitment, to invest in really great teachers. I'm, I'm here for it, right? Then we, you know, we do readers are leaders. Well, literacy is critical, right? Like, it's the most important thing, I would contend, that we, that we do. So what, okay, great. Then we've got stipends and supplements, then we've got ERP, then we've got, oh. All these were in one year, okay? Then can you go back to the slide where the fund balance was used?
Tell me about an ERP.
I'm just, I'm just calling it out, right? So at some point, somebody had to see this coming down the track. We use this much of savings to balance the budget. And I'm gonna be honest, I've spent this entire year, instead of like, living in a space of being able to innovate and do like really fun things, spent this entire year doing really, really hard things. And, and now we're having a hard conversation with the community about facilities, you know what I mean? I spent the first year at CLL, I don't know if anybody at CLL want to get on the elevator with me. It's a joke, I'm nice. Somebody actually told me on Friday, one of the first superintendents I seen pushed their own button on the elevator. I said, well, I don't know what that, but anyways, I, I, it's like 80-plus million dollars of fund balance was used. Savings, right? At some point, we gotta see this train coming down the track, right? And so here we are with this conversation. So what am I doing? What are we committed to doing that's hard? We started at CLL, because the first place you start is, my belief, as a former teacher and principal, is you start as far away from the school as you possibly can. That's step one, right? The next step is you have, again, to kind of look out. We have this long-term conversation about facilities. We have some people that are saying right now, you all should wait. A new board is coming. I'm, I will tell you, my advisement to this board is that that's the wrong thing to do. I'm gonna tell you case in point. When we stand in front, when we stood in front of FL Stanton last week, they asked a question, why did you make a decision to invest in renovating this building if you knew it would never be over 400 students? And we did. And so you, you sequence the conversation the way we're sequencing the conversation. We're sequencing the conversation from the construct of saying, what do we need to do from a facility footprint conversation? Then the second part of the conversation is, how are you going to use your splosh? It's, it's one, two. If you have splosh before a strategic facility conversation, you put the cart before the horse, or the chicken before the egg, whichever one's gonna happen. So we're having difficult conversations right now around facilities. We will continue to have very challenging conversations. It was asked earlier about the small school supplement. It was asked earlier about the baseline. You can't continue to do all of these things and do frankly, anything with excellence. And so we've got to get to a spot where, you know, I always tell people, like, equal isn't equitable. And, and, and almost, we've over-indexed on doing everything everywhere, and we can't do things really deeply anywhere. And so that's what really the conversation is. It's been a commitment that's been the last 13 months of, 14 months, that, that we've been here. And like, we'll continue, I think, our responsibility is to lift up these really difficult conversations in the community, to lift up this real difficult conversations, obviously, with the great board that I work for. But it, like, these are really difficult conversations that are, that are challenging, and that's what our commitment will be. And we, Lisa sent the, sent the, our internal team an email this, this morning, or late afternoon, early afternoon, about Fulton County, and I shared that with you all, like, everybody and everybody. But a lot of districts are looking at, or having this conversation right now.
Dr. Johnson, thank you for exclamating all the points that you did. I do not want it to be lost, why bring up supplier diversity and where we are with that. I remember just before coming on this board, taking a look at where we were on that front and seeing that less than 4% of our contracts were going to people in the community who look like us. And that's a big issue. Atlanta is Atlanta because what the city of Atlanta had decided to do with diversity procurement over at the airport. It changed the face of Atlanta forever, and we have a budget more than two X the size of the cities. And I don't know that we've done our behalf, done our part as a government entity to be able to, to help Atlanta further what Atlanta is. And so I bring that up unafraid. I bring that up on purpose, that as a board, as a, as a body, we should be intentional about making sure we're helping Atlanta to continue the legacy of what Atlanta is and opportunity it creates for our community.
Board Member Pace?
Thank you, Dr. Bracken, for the presentation and giving us additional insight on where we are related to the budget. I had a question around just cost savings initiatives that aren't necessarily at this point guaranteed, but could be explored. One of which, without going into detail, because we kind of hadn't made it public yet, but we've talked about for employees, what might it look like to partner with a local organization, I'll say, around health memberships, right, gym memberships? Could something like that present a savings opportunity from a state health benefit perspective? I know that's a little more actuarial, and we have to get into some of the numbers in terms of claims and risk and all those things. But opportunities like that, might there be others that we could explore that could afford us some wiggle room and larger cost savings down the line as we look across our different spending areas?
Yeah. So I think it's a great idea, and I think we have to continue to look at every idea and lift every stone. That one in particular is challenging, because state health sets the rates. And I'm not aware of a district in Georgia that doesn't participate in state health. And so with the, especially the challenge around the classified staff, where we don't receive any state funding to offset that cost, you're seeing more and more districts just really being squeezed out. We saw articles not too long ago of a school district presenting major financial crisis simply because of state health benefits and the number of employees that they have. And so I think that that's one that's challenging. We can continue to think about. And I have talked to my metro, various metro CFOs to think about how can we incentivize maybe married staff taking the, the benefits from their spouse's work, right? So maybe I could pay $2,000 for you to not be on our benefits and to be on your partner's benefits. So there's opportunities to think about things like that. But, so yes, we are being creative in what we're looking at. And again, anytime we hear ideas, we do go start running the numbers on them.
Absolutely. And if there's a way that, you know, we as a board can, without getting necessarily into the details and the nuts and bolts of the work, but there are partnerships that we can leverage, or relationships that we can leverage, or make introductions, definitely don't hesitate to let us know.
And I think the partnerships is a beautiful opportunity, especially as we talk about schools that are impacted next year with the small school supplement or with the baselines. That it could be just short-term investments, hopefully, long-term investments, where the partners come in and commit to a community or to a school. But that's a great place where, if there isn't the opportunity within the neighborhood to generate a lot of additional foundation support, that our partners will step in and help with that as well.
Thank you.
Board Member Howard?
But I'm so glad we're having this discussion, because this applies, obviously, to all of us, even though I'm so thankful for my colleagues on the Budget Commission. The board, one of our biggest responsibilities is adopting the budget, and one that ensures our system is strong and sustainable and healthy. And even with the big spends, and I really appreciate that slide, we've had these issues before that, too.
For sure.
So it's extremely important that we think about that. And I really appreciate your questions, Board Member Johnson, around like, how did we get here most recently? And I appreciate Dr. Johnson saying, I wasn't here. But, but, no, and, and, but, 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 but it does bring up the point that we need to own, working with everyone here, and asking the questions and really digging in. And that's why I'm so glad we're here right now. And this is my other favorite slide, or actually, this is my favorite slide, Slide 28, because it really tells a story in a way that I think is more digestible. And there's been intention to do the right things. Everybody is working extremely hard. And it's hard to have these conversations, which is why we have been looking at the school, small school supplement for a long time. small school supplement for a long time. And doing it right now. And it's going to take time. And that's the other thing I think about is with facilities master planning, in order to do it, do it right, we need that two-year runway. So, we're not going to have immediate savings from that. And that is, the purpose of that is being more effective and giving more to our students, especially when looking at high school and other things that our students are not getting at different levels in terms of just experience and economies of scale. I really appreciate the presentation around sustainability and how we can hopefully realize some things sooner than later. But even that, an audit 2027. So, going back also to the email I sent out as Budget Commission Chair, I encourage everyone on the board to please read that email so you get even more from our meeting this week. As we go into the next meeting, we are going to have to make some hard decisions. And I also appreciated the list of things Fulton County is looking at right now. There are some creative things there. They also have a different structure, so they have some different choices.
That's right.
So, we're in a, you know, pivotal point where we're, we're looking at best adjusting, adjusting our structure long-term. But what are the decisions we're going to make now? And we did make a decision. And I don't, and hearing from the community and hearing from our employees around the eleven percent increase. Absolutely. But I do appreciate, Dr. Johnson, you're saying, we did put the chips on the table then, so we need to continue that because we can't walk it back. And then also, what we're doing to ensure we have that high-quality instruction. So, I, I know that you're supportive of that and we are. But it goes back to what other decisions are we going to make going forward? And sooner than later, to make sure that we're setting ourselves up best. All that being said, Dr. Bracken, in this time and space, how, and I really, you've said it directly to us, but how can you be even more direct in what you're going to need from us as a board as we have those conversations?
Right. So, I think the, the primary thing that you will see more this year is the forced trade-off conversation. And so, when we, not only are we not going backwards on compensation, we've already committed to going further. We have a strategic plan commitment to get the average salary to a hundred thousand dollars by 2030. So, we will continue to invest in that area. But this is something I spoke at one of the community meetings last week. If we are paying a teacher an average of a hundred and thousand dollars, we need to expect that they're going to have more students in their classroom, that they're going to have more access to students, that they won't, that we won't have classrooms with eight, twelve students in them. And so, that's part of those trade-off conversations. That's why you will start to see some recommendations around the school allotments. We have not touched school allotments, I don't think, since I've been here in a way that's very impactful. But we're going to have to have these trade-off conversations even within our school buildings that if we, again, the theory of action language, believe that the most qualified, high-paid teacher is the way to get our students where they deserve to be, then there has to be the trade-off conversation that we will not be able to have class sizes in the way that we have in the past, that we might not have as many wraparound services. There's going to have to be the what gives to have that. And maybe that's not where we go all in at, but then where do we go all in, right? So, that conversation, that direction is where we expect the board to help lead and guide us, even as we start setting our budget parameters over the next month or two. But those will help determine what those trade-offs are so we know where to continue to invest. Again, the revenue hasn't dipped negative yet. We're still getting money in, but we're not going to be able to continue spreading it over everything in the same way that we have.
No, I appreciate that. And looking at impact, like, what is the impact of the things we're doing? And one thing everyone, I think, has in common is our outcomes are not where they should be. We know that. And so, when we're making these decisions, what have we seen have the most impact? We'll, we'll need to be informed with all that information and have those really in-depth conversations. Because even though those big spend items, that is what, you know, we were recommended, we, we were told that would be the most impact going forward. Your point, Board Member Johnson, like, how do we ensure we're seeing like, what, what that's going to lead to? And obviously, there is an impact there in our budget, which if it's, if it's, like Dr. Johnson said at one point, if we're spending so much per pupil and you're having this tremendous gain, well, you may say, okay, that, that might be something we need to really look at continuing. And we're seeing incremental gain, which is, we want to celebrate those gains and we know people are working hard to achieve those and those are very important. But we know we're going to have to lean in and adjust to have even more gains because we know our children can achieve those gains and growth. And they deserve the support we give them in the right way. So, I hope to see everyone at the next Budget Commission meeting or at least listen in and ask questions. Always come to me. And then for the community, thank you as we go out and to the community, having the meetings with potentially impacted schools. I'm hearing a lot of good feedback around, okay, I'm now understanding the impact of the budget. I'm now understanding more of the why we're doing this. And of course, it's always got to be most effective support for students long-term. It's not just to close a budget gap. We've got to do this work for the right reasons. But thank you and team and everyone out there doing that work. I think it, it really helps people understand.
And kudos to the cluster soup who have been wearing their CFO hats all week and doing a fantastic job talking budget and finance to communities.
And I think my, the only other thing, well, I'm not going to bring that up right now. I appreciate the other questions that have come up about other areas of revenue and then just monitoring where we are with what is coming in terms of the economy. We've had the increase in revenue and then it drops. We know commercial property is undervalued, under-assessed, and that is an ongoing issue. But that's not, no matter what, going to be resolved immediately. And, and there could be some realistic, and we know there are decreases in those values of commercial properties. So, making sure we are taking all that into account as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bracken. I do believe brighter days are coming from a financial standpoint. It's just leaning, it's got to be, it's got to be. I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to call out a year because I'd be held accountable for calling out a year. But I do believe in the future, in the future, better days are here. So, as a part of this, HPM is here, Matt Sachs, Adam Dancer, obviously, from, from our team. And we'll, we'll turn to you all for a facilities update.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Board Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the board, Dr. Johnson. Before I make way for Matt Sachs from HPM, who's going to update us about where we have been, where we are and where we're headed in regards to engagement and communication around the facilities planning process, I would like to just remind everybody that this work is grounded by the APS's strategic plan, in particular, ensuring our system is efficient and effective. Going to hand it over to Matt.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dancer. Good afternoon, School Board members. Thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon. Already been some good conversations that have been a good lead-in to this topic. But really, I'm just going to do a really quick update today. Get this working. Thank you. Sorry about that. Really, just on the engagement that's taken place to date and kind of our next steps as we move forward to a first read of this plan in November. So, this first slide really just covers from when we started this process back in May. We're going to call this through September twenty-second because on September twenty-second, we released a refined set of scenarios. The first real big engagement was a framework survey that we put out in early May. That was open for most of the summer. I believe it closed August fifth. We had close to thirty-eight hundred responses to that survey, really just asking about different framework questions to help us shape how we approach this planning process. As mentioned, we released that first set of scenarios on August twenty-second. Accompanying that was a survey to which we had more than three thousand responses. Since this process started, we've had four hundred and sixty, and I'm sure that's even a little more now, let's-talk messages that we've received and responded to. We've engaged with our task force in five task force meetings. We've had ten in-person community meetings. A couple of those were, again, at the very beginning of the process as kind of a kickoff to the process. But also, after that initial survey release, many in-person meetings at, at various school campuses to listen to feedback and answer any question. We, we've had six virtual meetings as well for those who couldn't attend a meeting in person to get online, hear the presentation, and again, provide feedback or, or ask, have their questions answered. Lot of views to our comprehensive, long-range facility planning website where we're hosting all of these presentations, videos from all the meetings, additional materials, survey links. So, that has seen quite a lot of activity. And as we've been going through this process, we've constantly been updating the principles. And we've had multiple go-team updates as well. Okay? And then, as mentioned, on September twenty-second, we released a refined set of scenarios. And many of those were refined based on feedback that we received in, in that online survey and those community meetings and, and online virtual meetings and let's-talk emails. So, since that's been released, we, there was an accompanying survey, which we've seen, I believe the count today was about six hundred and fifty responses. The survey link is available on this slide here using that QR code or the, the email address, or I'm sorry, the web link typed out there. When that revised set of scenarios was released on the twenty-second, we updated the task force that evening. And then, later that week, we had two virtual meetings, September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We, we also updated the go-team on September twenty-fifth. And as was just mentioned by Dr. Bracken, really, all of the cluster superintendents and operations and facilities and other support staff have been going out starting last week and through, through Wednesday of this week with twenty-two individual school-based community meetings to meet with staff and parents at these individual school sites and get their feedback. And here's kind of our next steps as we get to that first read in November. On October ninth, we are actually going to release a further refined or what we may call primary scenarios. That will be released around the same time we start our task force meeting on the ninth. And I know we go into fall break the next week. And then, the week of October twentieth will be some level of additional engagement. We're still determining what that may be. And then, we plan to release what our recommendation will be, likely on that October twenty-eighth date, the week ahead of that Board of Education first read, which will be November fifth. And then, again, the second read to the board is planned for December third. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Dancer, who has an update on the SPOST.
Thank you. I think that a major reason, and Dr. Johnson mentioned this early, for this long-range facilities plan is to help us better outline our future capital plans and projects, including any new construction, needed renovation, investments in areas like transportation, safety and security, IT. And so, it is essential to kind of have a share after this process, kind of what the timeline moving forward when we think of ESPOST, which is the primary funding mechanism for those capital projects. And so, I just wanted to give you a, this is a draft rundown of what it will look like in 2027, from January through March, developing what that particular plan and recommendation will be like. And that, it is important to note, that's just not, and because we see it in our refined scenarios, we see ESPOST dependent. It is not just the facilities planning. There are other buckets of work that we need to utilize those SPOST dollars for. Like I mentioned, transportation, safety and security, instructional supplies can be a part of that as well. So, and then from March and April to present those thoughts to you all and to, you know, and publicly, we're going to be reviewing those of, the, the different scores of the conditions of our buildings, different revenue forecasts, looking at other data and developing that project list, doing some community engagement in April and May, and then seeking approval prior to the end of this school year, head June, to move forward with the referendum for a eventual vote in November of 2026. So, just wanted to put that out there because that is an important part of this next step of this process. With that being said, thank you. And any questions?
Any questions? Board Member Brooks.
Just had a question for clarification on the timeline around the ESPOST conversation. I know it's come up many times that we really need to get through the strategic facility plan so that we knew how and where we would invest our dollars. Given this timeline that's, that's there, when is the real, we need to know what's a school, what's not a school, what's a, you know, potentially something else? When do we need to know in order to be best informed for the next process?
Well, I, I mean, as soon as, as soon as possible because that's, to, to the point of what was mentioned earlier and some of the conversations that are coming up in the, in the community about our decisions previously to spending SPOST dollars to renovate or build schools that can never meet the numbers we're looking for. I mean, truthfully, that January to March, so right after this December vote, it's critical that we're already starting that conversation. Because there, again, this is not, you know, the money, while it's a very significant amount of money over time, it doesn't all come in at one time. So, we have to really prioritize what that looks like. We have a lot of considerations other than just construction and renovation. We have other parts of our district that need, that need those funds as well. So, sooner rather than later, we actually, departments like IT, transportation, nutrition, athletics, and teaching and learning are already making a prioritized list of what they need for this upcoming ESPOST. And that's in conjunction with what we see in this facilities planning process.
So, is what I'm hearing that January to March is really kind of your buffer area for?
Correct. I mean, developing, building out that plan.
Right. And then, my last question is, can ESPOST dollars be used to help us with the ERP spend?
So, theoretically, the answer is yes, theoretically.
Okay. I'm just going back to thinking about those big spin bullet points on that slide.
I want to stay, I want to, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to kind of look over at Nina. Theoretically, the answer is yes. I want to answer it appropriately as possible because it is something that the public has, decides.
Always got the right answer.
Not your first rodeo, you know?
Tell my wife. I hope she's not listening right now. I hope she's not listening. She might be listening.
Board Member Bowman.
Your son goes screenshot that.
So, just for clarification, can you tell me what percentage of our building maintenance does ESPOST cover? It's not a hundred percent correctly. It's about what's left, like typically.
What's left, well, what we've used since?
Well, it's actually two questions. So, one question is the ESPOST that we collect, does that cover one hundred percent of our building maintenance?
No, not, not one hundred percent, not those daily operational pieces. It's for kind of those longer-term investments, the big HVAC projects, the big roofing projects, those types of things. The, the daily maintenance and ops, not necessarily.
And then, where are we pacing on the, the maximum amount for this current ESPOST? Have we met that, the, the maximum?
Yeah. I'm going to, Dan may have the, the better answer on this one since he's.
I'm just trying to figure out if there's some space for this FIFA that's coming in the land, if there's still some money that can be added to that pot.
Sure. The maximum amount is six.
The maximum amount is $650 million, and we are trending towards getting very close to maybe even being above that 650.
Okay. Right now, we are, so not, or to the projections until the end.
Collections are still being under, we still have a few, we still have another year or so of collections, but our trends are getting towards, we're going to be right at the 650 year possibly over.
Okay, and while you're up here, of that 650 million, what is left of our building maintenance, our our building, I don't know exactly what the the term is, but the amount that we need deferred maintenance, like what is left for us to cover?
Well, we have, we have, we have a couple, we still have one or two major projects that we have remaining that we haven't started. I'm not sure if I'm asking or answering your question, but that we still have a couple of those that we are initiating.
I'm, I'm really trying to get at, after we spend the money that we get from ESPOST, is there still money that we have to spend to keep our our buildings in good space?
Again, and just, just as a reminder, ESPOST is about $650 million. Our, our need is over, one, over two, almost $2 billion worth of need. So we are, our needs are nowhere near being met by the ESPOST.
I just wanted to understand that. I wanted it stated.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, but, but I think to, I think to, I don't know, just put a bow on this, but if we can be aggressive with our, if we can be intentional and aggressive with our current facilities plan, there is some potential cost avoidance down the road from the standpoint of deferred maintenance, which is a byproduct when you take the SPLOST investment and you couple it with the avoidance, right, from a liability standpoint of maintenance of facilities, et cetera, et cetera. It, it, it could reposition the district in a place of strength from a facility standpoint because, to your point, there's not enough in the SPLOST to cover all the maintenance that exists anyway.
Yeah, and I would just add that, so deferred maintenance is one thing, but just your annual operating budget for maintenance and operations that your general fund supports is around 130 million a year. And that's your operating budget that supports maintenance and operations. And where we can find opportunities to become more efficient there will also save off your annual expenses, not just the deferred maintenance.
No more questions. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your reports. Thank you, Board, for your engagement. Madam General Counsel, is there a reason for the Board to retreat into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board needs to discuss student discipline, personnel, real estate, and legal matters.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session to discuss student discipline, personnel, real estate, and legal matters?
Second.
Property moved by Vice Chair McDonald, second by Board Member Briscoe Brown. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.